And I'm the chairman of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. Commissioners Redmond and Costin will not be in attendance today. Before we get started, I have asked Ms. Cuellar to lead us in prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Horsley. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today in this beautiful spring day in the city of Virginia Beach, asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin our meeting. We're especially grateful to our first responders, who are here with us today, keeping us safe in our public citizen, excuse me, public setting as we engage. We ask that you allow us to grow closer as a group as we set forth to advance the city of Virginia Beach. In your name we pray. Amen.
Would you please join me in the pledge? My pledge is allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I've asked Commissioner Frankenfield to introduce members of the planning commission.
Well, thank you, Chairman Wall. See if I can do this without any major problems. All right, so I'm going to go from me to the right and try to get everybody straight. I'm Barry Frankenfield, and I am the newest planning commissioner. And I have a problem with my mouth sometimes, so I will try to keep it calm here. David Bradley, to my right, is a retired Virginia Beach Deputy City Manager, was the best budget director of all times. He could find budget dust everywhere to make projects work. David Weiner is a commercial sales rep and is close to the longest continuous planning director that we have. I'm planning commissioner, I think there are quite a few of them. And Dee Oliver is a funeral director, and we have lots of things to say about her, but we're not going to say them today. We're just going to say she's a great person. George Alcaraz, a local contractor, entrepreneur, very active in the Beach District. And then we have, it's not the same on here. It is Don Horsley. See, I had, oh, no. Sorry. See, I knew I messed this up. I'm reading this thing. It's Jack Wall is the chairman, and he's a civil engineer and very well-known in the profession and a very reasonable, calm person that leads us all. Then we have Don Horsley, who's a farmer, and other than the fact that he went to Virginia Tech, is a pretty good guy and has been on the planning commission also for a very long time. Robin Klein is a healthcare professional from the Centerville District. I didn't say that for everybody, so sorry. And her claim to fame is that she once worked for the Baltimore Orioles. It was very important. And then, last but not least, we have Holly Cuellar, who is at large. She is a military wife, and she has been active in government affairs her entire career. And her claim to fame is that she won the blue ribbon at the Virginia State Fair for her carrot cake. Things you didn't know about everybody, now you do. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tahan, can you, oh.
Oh, I have to interview him.
You've got Kay.
I'll get to interview Kay. Kay Wilson is our city attorney and has for 30 or 40 years been trying to keep me out of trouble, and I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You didn't do a good job.
All right. I'll go ahead and introduce the planning staff that's here, supporting the commission today. Clerk in today, we have Madison Harris and Pam Sandley. We also have our planning administrator Carolyn Smith, our zoning administrator Hannah Sabo, our planning administration staff, Wa Down, Michelle Coleman, Elizabeth Nowak, and Michaela Kenny somewhere, as well as our zoning staff that we have available that's assisting with short-term rentals, which is Levi Luckenbach, who's one of our newer employees, as well as Channing Tuttle. We also have Brandon Hackney with our zoning division, Aubrey Troublecock, and Hank Morrison as well, who's with Comp Planning, and Aubrey, who's with the Development Services Center. Okay, thank you. Next, I've asked the clerk to describe the rules and order for business for today's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meetings. It's equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the commission with respect and civility. We request that cell phones be put on silent during this meeting. Following is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission Agenda. The Order of Business for this public hearing, Withdrawals and Deferrals. The chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. The Consent Agenda. The second Order of Business is the consideration of the Consent Agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believe are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. Regular Agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. When an agenda item has been called, we will recognize the applicant or their representative first. Following the applicant or representative, registered speakers will be called next. Speakers in support or opposition of an agenda item will have three minutes to speak, unless they are solely representing a large group, such as a civic league or homeowners association, in which case they will have 10 minutes. Please note that the actions taken by the commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the city council. Commission thanks you for your attendance, and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next Order of Business is consideration of requests for withdrawal or deferral. Please come forward if you have any items for withdrawal. Okay, seeing none, please come forward if you have any items to be deferred.
Chairman Wall, members of the commission, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Nemo United Methodist Church. Michelle did a good job of explaining the need for the deferral for 30 days. We should be here next month. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? The chairman is also aware that Agenda Items Number Seven and Eight have requested a deferral for indefinite deferral. Does anyone have any objection for these items to be deferred? Do, okay, seeing none? Do I have a motion to defer items number two, Agenda Item Number Two, for 30 days? And a motion to defer Agenda Items Seven and Eight indefinitely?
Something.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Bradley and a second by Mr. Horsley.
Okay, the vote is open. Mr. Frankenfield, can we get your vote, please?
Oh. Thank you.
A recorded vote of nine in favor, zero against. Agenda Item Number Two has been deferred for 30 days, and Agenda Items Number Seven and Eight have been deferred indefinitely.
Okay, thank you. The next Order of Business is the Consent Agenda, and I'm going to turn that over to Vice Chair Alcaraz to run that portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, we have seven items on the Consent Agenda. These applications that are recommended for approval by staff and the Planning Commission concur that there are, and if there's no speakers in opposition, that we will be putting them on the Consent Agenda. Agenda Item Number Three is a conditional use permit for a car wash facility at the northeast corner of General Booth Boulevard and Prosperity Road, and the applicant Car Spa Incorporated. Is there a representative?
Thank you, Mr. Alcaraz. Members of the commission, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, I represent Car Spa. Wanted to mention that Mr. Bruce Berlin with General Booth Venture LLC, who are the owners and developers of the property, and the extra parcel to the north of this parcel is under their ownership. My applicant, in this case, Car Spa, is under contract by this piece of property. Also Danielle Danzing with Kimley Horn, our civil engineers here as well. Thank Wa for all of his diligent efforts on this application and all eight conditions as staff has recommended are acceptable to the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, I ask Commissioner Weiner to read this item for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Alcaraz. This is a request for a conditional use permit for a car wash facility. In 2019, City Council granted a conditional use permit request for operations of an automobile service station, Wawa, on the northeast corner of Prosperity Road and General Booth Boulevard. The 9.48 acre parcel zone B2 community business was proposed to be subdivided into two lots, with the Wawa site occupying 5.51 acres. Southern lot, there were no immediate plans for the remaining 3.97 parcel. The applicant now seeks to subdivide the northern 3.97 acres into two lots, with 2.21 acre and 1.76 acre lot. The applicant plans to develop 2.21 acre site with 5,700 square foot automated car wash facility. We recommend approval and put it on the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. Agenda Item Number Four is a conditional use permit for a motor vehicle rental at 1112 Lynn Haven Parkway for Enterprise Leasing Company of Norfolk Richmond LLC. Is there a representative here to speak today?
Thank you, Mr. Alcaraz. Again, Commissioners, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Enterprise. I believe Ms. Kaylee Krug with Enterprise is with us this afternoon, and I want to thank Michaela again for a very thorough job in evaluating and keeping us on our toes with this application. All 15 conditions are acceptable to the applicant and appreciate being on the Consent Agenda. Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, I ask Commissioner Bradley to read this item for the record.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for motor vehicle rentals on a one-acre parcel zone B2 community business district. The site is currently developed with a 3,200 square foot building with an overhead canopy and accessory structure. The buildings on site were constructed in 1975 and were previously occupied by a restaurant, what they drive-through, and a short-term loan title business. The applicant proposes to display no more than 25 vehicles at any one time on the site. No automobile repair is proposed, and staff has recommended condition to prohibit that activity. City, the planning staff recommended this. There was no known opposition, so Planning Commission decided to put it on the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Five is a conditional use permit for a family daycare at the home at 1712 Moon Valley Drive for Nora Nemely. Is there a representative here today? Please come forward and state your name. Hi.
Good afternoon. My name is Nora Nemely.
Thank you. Do you accept all the conditions?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. May be seated.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, I ask Commissioner Oliver to read this item for the record.
Thank you. This is a request for a conditional use permit to operate a family daycare home for up to eight children within the applicant's single-family dwelling in the Lake Placid neighborhood. The applicant has over 10 years of experience in caring for children, and the designated outdoor play area is located in the backyard and is enclosed with a six-foot solid privacy fence. The typical hours of operation are proposed at 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Staff found the property to be well-organized and well-kept. This request for a conditional use permit for a family daycare home, in staff's opinion, is consistent with the policies and goals set forth in the comprehensive plan for the suburban area. Staff recommends approval of this request with the conditions listed below, and therefore, we have placed it on the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Six for home occupation, for a conditional use permit for home occupation located at 4,500 Hollingsworth Lane, applicant baking-it LLC. Is the applicant here? Please come forward. Hi, can you state your name for the record?
Brianna Small.
Thank you. You accepted the conditions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, I have Commissioner Klein to read this item for the record.
The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a home occupation to operate a commercial kitchen in the 460 square foot attached garage of their single-family dwelling in the Glenwood neighborhood. This is the applicant's desire to prepare baked goods and deliver them to customers at off-site locations. The applicant will be the sole operator of the kitchen. No other employees are proposed for this in-home business. Staff recommends approval, and the commission agrees.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Nine, a modification for Proffers at 5453 Wesleyan Drive for RVB3 LLC. Is there a representative today here to speak for the item? Come forward and state your name, please.
Hi, good afternoon. Todd Roethlisberger, Attorney with Pulbrook Plumlee on behalf of RVB, excuse me, RVB3. The applicant, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Appreciate being on the Consent Agenda. We do agree to the terms set forth, and appreciate Ms. Nowak's assistance with this application as well.
Great, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Weiner to please read this for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Alcaraz. This is a modification to Proffers. The applicant is requesting a modification to Proffers to redevelop a former Sonic Drive-In Restaurant building into a Little Caesar's Restaurant. The building is located on a 25,204 square foot parcel in Wesleyan Common Shopping Center. We recommend approval of the modifications to the Proffers and place this on the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Twelve, which is a conditional use permit for a craft distillery at 712 Atlantic Avenue for Waterman Spirits LLC. Please come forward.
Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Waterman Spirits LLC. Again, Brandon's done a very good job on this application, asked us a lot of questions, got a lot of answers from us, and all six conditions as recommended, and the staff report are acceptable to the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Bradley to read this for the record.
The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a craft distillery at 712 Atlantic Avenue. The property consists of multiple structures and uses, including the shack, which is primarily an outdoor resort establishment with dining, entertainment, and outdoor recreation facilities that has become popular with both visitors and residents. There is an existing 9,300 square foot masonry building on the southern portion of the property. The craft distillery will produce and sell spirits with a 1,800 square foot portion of the existing structure facing Atlantic Avenue. Planning staff recommended this conditional use permit, and Planning Commission has put it on our Consent Agenda.
Thank you.
Mr. Frankenfield.
Oh, are you ready to vote?
No, I'm just ready for you to abstain.
I need to abstain from the Festival LLC. I am a service provider for that company, and my company is at 1,400 Woodhouse Road, Virginia Beach, Virginia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda Item Number Fifteen is a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 410 22nd Street, Unit B, Coastal Accommodations LLC. Is there a representative here today to speak on this item? Please come forward. Just state your name for the record.
Grace Morris.
Okay, thank you. Are the conditions acceptable to you?
Yes.
Thank you. May be seated. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, I have asked Commissioner Klein to read this for the record.
This 20,800 square foot lot is Zoned OR Oceanfront Resort, according to city records. It is a two-bedroom townhome constructed in 2015. The owner submitted a conditional use permit request to operate a short-term rental on site. Staff recommends approval, and the commission agrees.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that was the last item for the Consent Agenda. The Planning Commission places the following applications on the Consent Agenda. Items Number Three, Four, Five, Six, Nine, Twelve, and Fifteen.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve by consent of Agenda Items Three, Four, Five, Six, Nine, Twelve, and Fifteen?
Second. I'll make that motion.
Did you say that?
I did say.
Okay, all right. I guess he's already said he made a motion. Okay, thank you. Okay, so hearing a second, are there any planning commissioners besides Mr. Frankenfield that are abstaining on any of the agenda items that are on the Consent Agenda? Okay. The motion for approval is by Mr. Alcaraz, and the second is by Mr. Weiner.
Okay, thank you. The vote is open. By recorded vote of nine in favor, zero against, Agenda Items Three, Four, Five, Six, Nine, and Fifteen have been recommended for approval. Agenda Item Number Twelve, by recorded vote of eight in favor, zero against, with one abstention by Commissioner Frankenfield, Agenda Item Number Twelve has been recommended for approval.
Okay. All right, thank you. That concludes this portion of the Planning Commission hearing for the Consent Agenda. If you had an application that was on the Consent Agenda, your request will now be scheduled for an upcoming City Council meeting. Staff will contact you about the date. For those applications on the Consent Agenda, thank you for your participation. And you may, you can stay for the meeting, either, you know, if it's virtual or in person, but at this point, you can, you're free to leave. So, we'll give you a few minutes to leave before we start the next portion. Okay, thank you. The next Order of Business is the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, we're ready for the first item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first item today is Agenda Item Number One, City of Virginia Beach, a resolution to amend the City of Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan 2016 to address citywide stormwater impacts for discretionary land use applications.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Tahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can you state your name for the record?
Robert Tahan, planning director of the city of Virginia Beach. As we have here, we have the resolution to amend a chapter of the Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan to address the resolution by City Council. On September 7th, 2021, City Council passed the resolution in support of the bond referendum, which had a number of things, and one of them included a requirement for staff to bring forward an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, which would require all discretionary applications, rezonings, to provide essentially a preliminary stormwater analysis showing that they would have no impact on the city's stormwater system as they go through the process. The proposal would only impact those discretionary applications, while, of course, those that are by right developments or even conditional use permits would still have to meet the city's stormwater standards, which are in the Public Works Design Standards Manual. On February 15th, the City Council remanded this back to the Planning Commission to obtain additional public comment. As you know, you've already voted on this item, and we did hold at your last public hearing a public comment session afterwards on this amendment. I stand by to answer any questions regarding this.
Are there any questions for Mr. Tahan? David?
Yes. Okay, so, I know I've asked this, and you have talked about this, but for the record, I just wanted you to say this. What we have in the comprehensive plan now is for the southern watershed.
That is correct, yes, sir.
What we're putting in there is for the rest of the city. Can you explain the difference between what's in there now and the difference what we're going to put in there, what wants to go in there for the rest of the city?
Correct. So, the comprehensive plan currently has language that says that the southern watershed is subject to special drainage considerations. So, what has been required is what's known as a preliminary stormwater analysis, which essentially right sizes the development, knowing that the site that's being proposed when it goes through a discretionary application in the southern watershed can actually fit on the site and also still fit the stormwater management. It is different than what is required of the council resolution. What's shown for the preliminary stormwater analysis for the southern watershed that we currently do now just shows that it has to comply with the city's requirements. The key difference is that the proposed language states that you cannot have any impact upstream or downstream. So, essentially, you cannot raise any water levels, even if it doesn't cause flooding. The current language in the southern watershed says that you cannot exacerbate existing, you cannot create flooding or exacerbate existing flooding. So, if there could be conditions where, in the southern watershed, that there is capacity, and you could add water to it that would not cause the system to flood, and that would be permissible. This new language in the Comp Plan would state that you cannot add water into the system. You would have to detain it on-site.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Frankenfield.
Okay. So, if this is not approved, does it really have any impact on site plan project approval? In other words, I'm asking, are those requirements in place in the Public Works Guidelines, regardless of whether this is included in the comprehensive plan?
Yes, so there are current regulations in the Public Works Design Standards Manual that does not allow you to create flooding or exacerbate existing flooding. This is the, what's being, per the resolution that's being proposed in this language does make it more stringent, though, for discretionary applications. So, it is saying that they cannot utilize any of the capacity in the system. So, like, as I said before, if it's, if there is capacity in the system, they cannot, they, if you go through the discretionary process, you cannot add water to the system to, as long, based on this language that it is. And I'm having...
Can I, I think, from what I'm understanding... Go ahead, you want to do it, go ahead. From what I'm understanding, what he asked, if this isn't passed, is it going to change anything?
No, this does, this being passed does not change what our current design regulations are, if that's the question. So, it will not change the current standards that are in place. So, I apologize for being...
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers on this item?
Yes, sir. We have four speakers signed up today. Brad Martin, followed by Paul Wallace.
Barry, I think you need to turn your mic on when you're talking. Learn that. You'll get it by your sixth meeting or so.
I just won't talk anymore.
So, please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and commission members.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commission members. I am Brad Martin, and I've been a civil engineer here in Tidewater for 29 years. Let me first say that the development community generally supports reasonable and measurable stormwater analysis requirements, even if they are more burdensome. 1.5 feet of sea level rise and 20% heavier rainfalls are proper protections that we're incorporating into our designs. That said, these proposed changes to the comprehensive plan do not match the stormwater design standards adopted by city council in just February and March of this year, even beyond the change from 0.00 to 0.04. The verbiage of no impact is incongruous with the allowances in the regulations, like Mr. Tahan just said, that if the local area does not experience current flooding, the project can increase the tailwater elevation in the pipes as long as new flooding is not caused. So a design result specifically allowed in the regulations for almost two years would be eliminated by this no-impact clause. I think it's also important to understand what is intended by no impact as well. The dynamics and the results of this modeling software can be analyzed, and I expect in every single case, they will show that there has been some measurable impact on the public stormwater. Maybe lower, higher over here, but lower over there, or a heavier flow rate earlier in the storm, which leads to a lower runoff volume later. There's always an impact, even if it's positive. But more importantly than the precision of our design analysis, though, is the fact that we now have to consider how an attorney or a judge would interpret these proposed changes to the comprehensive plan. I don't have to tell you that we've entered into a litigious era with regard to these processes. Recent projects have made their way through the planning staff, the planning commission, and then city council approval, and subsequently, the disaffected stakeholder neighbors have filed suit to stop the projects. In cases like those, would this no-impact verbiage you're considering today essentially tie the hands of the determining authority and disqualify a future project, even based on the most inconsequential impact, with the overall analysis being substantially positive? We're not just talking about making things more difficult on the consultants, or more risky, costly, and burdensome to the developers. Think about the chilling effect that this would have on the potential for future projects in our city, when prospective developers would bypass Virginia Beach entirely because it's not worth the risk to even begin the process for a development project that could completely unravel because of a judge's interpretation of no impact. The solutions for our stormwater and flooding problems can be found in the referendum the voters approved last November, and a diligent maintenance and repair program, which should be the... Thank you. Appreciate your time and appreciate your service.
Thank you, thank you. Are there any questions for?
Mr. Martin? Um, question for you. He didn't mention this, but the verbiage in the comprehensive plan, what about the proffer? The proffer that's being offered to people like you to say, okay, we'll just, we're going to put a proffer in there that says we'll deal with it, we'll get down the road. How do you feel about that?
I'm concerned about that because why do you have to proffer that you're going to follow the rules anyway? To me, I didn't understand that with, when it came out. I still can't quite understand how that lessens this regulation. There is still the challenge of this no-impact verbiage in the comprehensive plan. If Amazon decides to build a $2 billion facility here, but it's going to raise the floodwaters by an inch, is that development worth the cost? Worth the bite of the apple at that? You really have to consider that. I'm not, I still don't understand how the proffer saying that we're just going to follow the rules is, is going to help when this comprehensive plan burdens more than the rules do.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your service.
Anyone else? Okay, anyone else? All right, thank, thank you very much. All right.
Paul Wallace, followed by Eddie Bourdon.
Good afternoon. I'm Paul Wallace. I'm 2022 President of the Coastal Virginia Building Industry Association. I'm also President of Wallace Brothers Homes, with offices here in Virginia Beach at 2525 O'Conne Avenue. CVBIA advocates for a fair and balanced regulatory environment, so that our members can create quality, affordable homes and apartment homes in Virginia Beach, and throughout Hampton Roads. Our CEO, Claudia Cotton, spoke at your work session last month. Unfortunately, she had a family emergency and couldn't be here today, but we wanted to repeat our remarks for the record today. You already know the comprehensive plan is a policy document that serves as a guide for land use decisions. It does not apply to administrative acts such as engineered site plan review where stormwater is addressed. Rezoning decisions, too, are policy decisions regarding appropriate land use for property. Engineering for development happens after the policies, policy decisions have been made. At your work session last month, we raised a few questions, and we'd be interested in hearing any feedback you may have received from the staff. They were: Do we know the capacity of all stormwater system improvements that the bond referendum projects will create? Do we know if that capacity will only address current land uses? Do we know if the built-out system capacity will address future development under existing zoning? Do we know if the built-out system capacity will address future development under the recommended land use in the comp plan? If you look at stormwater as a public system or facility, such as road improvements, then rezoning and conditional rezoning requests evaluate impacts to the system. In a traffic impact study, if a rezoning does not add more or even reduces traffic impacts, then improvements are not required. Shouldn't this work in a similar way? If the proposed rezoning or conditional rezoning does not increase what would be added to the system under existing zoning conditions, there effectively is no impact, and we urge you to recommend against the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Wallace?
Yeah, I have a question. So I want to get this right. I mean, we need to get this right the first time. I like your questions. The one that I like the most, the capacity of the stormwater from referendum projects. I don't think that can be evaluated yet, could it, there's no way that that could be evaluated. But in the future, if your questions were answered, would you have a problem with this going into the comprehensive plan?
I think the issue for us still, as explained to me, is that we are required to do full stormwater engineering and analysis at the rezone application, not knowing whether we're going to receive the rezoning. And it's incredibly expensive, complicated, time-consuming, and all those things will have to be done after the rezoning was approved anyway, prior to the plan being completely approved. So specifically, what I'm here in opposition to is having this as part of a rezoning application, rather than just the overall engineering for any project.
Okay, that's what I'm going to get at. Okay, thank you.
So, yeah?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eddie Bourdon, followed by Chris Wood.
Chairman Wall, members of the commission, for the record, Eddie Bourdon, Virginia Beach attorney, and I'm speaking for myself. First of all, certainly my comments aren't intended in any way to impugn the motives behind this resolution and anything that we're discussing today. Stormwater and resiliency is a significant issue for our great city, and it certainly deserves all the focus it's getting and will continue to get and should get. This amendment to the comp plan, however, in my view, isn't an appropriate provision to be placed at this time in a long-term, 30,000-foot-in-the-air, aspirational view of our city's land use future, which is precisely the purpose of our comprehensive land use plan. City council can pass ordinances and adopt policies, and they can instruct staff to, and put those staff, through the city mayor, to put those policies in place that have to be followed. This may be, unfortunately, that, because it may change ever so slightly what the policy is, or the ordinance is, which you all discussed. It doesn't belong in the city's long-term comprehensive land use planning document, at least not at this time. When our great city encountered a major obstacle with the BRAC base closure process a couple of decades ago, great leadership within our city and within our region stepped up and patiently, collaboratively, and I'll repeat deliberatively, and in hindsight, extremely successfully, analyzed, worked through, and evaluated the major problems bore down into the weeds that were presented by this BRAC MOU, closing oceanic process, over not only many, many months, but years. And in that process, we as a city didn't act precipitously by amending our comprehensive land use plan at the onset, or even in the middle of that process. We waited until we actually had figured out how we were going to deal with it, and we amended our zoning ordinance, and then whatever was added to the comp plan to reflect what our zoning ordinance had done. Nothing, absolutely nothing was done in haste. Our city obviously has thousands of developed properties, and especially at the northern half of the city, worth billions and billions of dollars, in areas throughout the city where the public stormwater infrastructure and management infrastructure is of varying capacities, varying quality, developed over decades and decades during different times of policies and interpretations. Based upon the recently adopted assumptions, heavier rainfall and 1.5 feet of sea level rise being two of many...
Thank you, Mr. Bourdon. Your time is, is up.
Hold on, Mr. Bourdon.
Mr. Bourdon, hang on one second. Are there any questions for?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to answer the proffer question.
I have a question. I, see, something caught my attention, which you said, that it shouldn't go into the comprehensive plan at this time. Now, we're going through a comprehensive plan review this year. Is, and is there a time that this should go, or you think this might go with proper wording that this should go into the comprehensive plan?
Well, I, if, after every, I mean, again, we're, we have this policy that everyone's adapting to, okay? I mean, the development community has been extremely patient, understanding that the city staff didn't understand these models any more than the consultants, and the outside understood these models, and if, and developers have even spent, you know, tens and tens of thousands of dollars. Mr. Berlin was here, and they ran, he told me the model about a dozen times on that property of Prosperity and General Booth Boulevard, six figures. So everyone's been trying to be patient and work through the process. And this, this particular aspect has been something that doesn't fit in that collaborative, deliberative process, because these models aren't perfect. No one can expect perfect. We don't expect perfect of the consultant community, nor of the city staff. Everybody's doing the best they can to try to, you know, to put the focus on this problem and work through the modeling, figure out what, because there are problems with it, and again, not, not impugning anybody's motives. And then we cherry pick and put this in a comp plan when we don't have it all figured out by a long shot. We don't have a comprehensive, you know, process moving forward, when we should be trying to bring people together, because the redevelopment, and that's what 90-plus percent of the northern half of the city, which this applies to, is, because it's 90% plus developed, that's our opportunity to not just have the public component pay to make it better. The development and redevelopment, redevelopment being the word I should have used, that redevelopment is an opportunity to make the system work better as well. And we don't talk about conditional use permits under the shore drive overlay, which is most of what you get on shore drive, and that's Chesapeake Beach Ocean Parks, where we got the biggest problem. And that's because of putting half the sea level rises, everything goes into the river and right there at the mouth. So everybody's, I think truly, everybody's trying to, to pull the thing in the right direction. But I think this is cherry picking, and it, and as Mr. Martin said, I think it has the potential on more than one level to be a negative and not a positive. And, and that's why I'm here. I'm not suggesting that, that all this emphasis isn't necessary. It is necessary. But I think sticking this in the comprehensive plan, which may have unanticipated consequences, and I'm not sure what it is that we think we're accomplishing by putting it in there. And that's, that's really my, that's my view of it. It isn't, if, as we did in BRAC, we get to the end, and we have everything that the region, the Navy, everybody was in agreement, but it took a lot of time. And then we implemented it by ordinance, and then if it's then put in the comprehensive plan, referencing the ordinance, that makes sense. And I'm not saying that mentioning it in the comprehensive plan is a problem, but this language, I think, is a problem, certainly at this time.
Right, okay.
Now, can I answer your proffer question?
Sure. I'd love to hear your opinion.
I, I don't have the same opinion that Mr. Martin does. I believe that the, the ability to have, to proffer that, and to have the applicant that's going to develop the property or redevelop, and redevelop is really what this is going, this is about, having them put on the record that they understand going in, so they don't have to spend $100,000 before they get zoning, that they're going to have to spend it once they have zoning. That's not going to change what's required of them. I don't find that to be problematic.
But, go, I'm going to go another direction. What if you get to the end, and you find out it doesn't work?
That's the risk that the, that the applicant takes.
Okay, okay.
But to, but to tell something, Mr. Martin talked about, and he's, I don't disagree with him in terms of, it has the potential, this, I think, does, and again, not, not by itself, but with other, other things thrown into it, to keep people from wanting to come from outside to develop in our area. Maybe for local developers, maybe protects, I don't think so. I think it's going to cause problems for everybody. Potentially, again, potentially, and this is small, small stuff in that regard. But it, right now, what you've had to do in the southern part of the city, is you had to make, had to be able to prove that you could do it, not just come close. And that's why Mr. Berlin had to do it 12 times at, you know, six figures, and others have had to do the same thing. That, you shouldn't have to spend that much money just to get a chance to see if you can get it rezoned. But if you say you understand it, and you put it in writing, then you, you take that risk, and you have your eyes wide open. I think the city's protected in that regard. So I don't find that to be problematic. And I think that's an important question that you ask.
And I don't think it's problematic either, but I've talked to the people that I've talked to who don't want to take that chance.
Right, but then, then they need to go somewhere else.
Sure. No, I agree. Or just do the water study upfront.
Right, because you're going to, you, it's better to do it after you know you have the entitlement, in which case you can make your development smaller if you need to, to meet the requirements, et cetera, et cetera. But you're not, you're not exposing the city at that point by having a development approve for X number of square feet, and you wind up being X minus 40% square feet, but to make the policy, you know, to make the stormwater work.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Martin.
Um, I think he answered it, because I was just going to ask you, Mr. Bourdon, I think in the same realm. I was going to, I wanted to ask Mr. The engineer, Mr. Martin, but the concern of the potential prospects, if you were to proffer that, you know, what, being that you're on both sides, as an attorney, a land use attorney, do you see the risk with one side and not the other, or vice versa, with, with this proffer? I mean, is the deal going to happen or not happen because the no-impact proffer?
Well, but, well, but, all right, I, I did...
Do you see?
I do, but does a proffer, does a proffer say no impact? I don't think the proffer, does a proffer say no impact?
I think we're blending a couple of things together, so...
Yes, thank you.
So, if you were talking only southern watershed, it would mean that you understand that you would meet all the criteria.
Right.
I think Mr. Bourdon has made clear he doesn't believe that the one that would apply to the northern part of the city would be appropriate. But for the southern watershed, it would say that they understand that they are required to meet, and they will meet the city's stormwater requirements.
Yeah, that, that's what, that's what I, and that's, I think that's where we've been doing the proffers, the southern part, because this hadn't existed in the northern part.
Yes, sir.
But it is, but it is a proffer, though, in the northern part, right? We do have a proffer that's...
So this doesn't exist yet in the northern part of the city?
Right.
So the proffer doesn't exist yet?
The, the need for the proffer...
No impact.
Does not exist yet.
Okay.
So I think we're getting blended together a policy decision on what's required to get through the application process. I think we probably should just stick around whether the policy in the comprehensive is, is an important part.
As, as Bobby, as Mr. Tahan has said, in the southern part of the city, it's been, it's been fine. But again, we don't have this no-impact. If, if, if no-impact isn't somehow better defined, you're, and, and the real problem with this is that it's going to get in the way of redevelopment, and that's my biggest point, because the northern half of the city development is going to be redevelopment. It's not going to be greenfield development. And it doesn't deal with all of the existing by rights that people already have and can add on, and et cetera, et cetera. So it's, to me, it's, it's too cherry picked, and it should be, you need, we need every piece of property and every property owner to help solve this problem, not just the money at it through infrastructure, which we have to do that, too. Thank you.
I got it. Chad?
Okay, any, I'm sorry.
I'm kind of confused for a second. Explain this to me, because I was in the stakeholders' meetings that I was in, that we were talking about the proffer, and the proffer, what we were talking about wasn't the southern watershed, it was the, the city, the other part. But so the proffer is not in place yet for the northern part of the city, only the southern watershed? So that is a...
What we discussed in the stakeholder meeting was a way to simplify the preliminary stormwater analysis review. Currently, right now, the preliminary stormwater analysis is only required in this, for, for discretionary actions in the southern part, in the southern watershed of the city, which is where it's applying right now. That's a policy decision that staff has moved forward with to allow for the developer to determine whether they want to do the full analysis, or provide the, the simplified analysis by providing a, either allowing staff to impose a condition, or they provide a proffer stating that they will meet the requirements.
In the southern watershed?
In the, in the southern watershed. There's, there's no reason to have it in the northern part of the city, because there is no policy for the northern part of the city.
But if this goes in as a policy in the comprehensive plan, then it will be.
Correct, but I, I think that, I think you should separate the, that portion from, from the policy discussion.
And I understand that, that's not a problem, but that's what I was, that's what I was under the impression, that once, if this does go into the comprehensive plan, the proffer will be in there also. That's not correct.
It'll be an option for the developer to, to provide that.
So it will be in there, okay, okay, I understand that, okay. So that's right. Good, I'm not confused.
Okay.
All right.
Talking about cherry picking, I can't pick the proffer and alone, and not the rest of the amendment, right? In fact, the proffer's not even in here.
Correct, this is... Correct, this is own, what you're, what the planning commission is considering is the, the change to the comprehensive plan stating what is required for discretionary applications in the rest of the city.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
We have one final speaker, Chris Wood.
Mr. Wood, you've got three minutes.
Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Sure, my name is Chris Wood. I work for McCleskey and Associates, a local real estate management company. I just wanted to say I appreciate the opportunity and I oppose the proposed change to the city's comp plan. The comp plan has been stated today is meant to be a guide for the future development, aspirational development of our city, and it's not meant to be a technical bulletin. The comp plan doesn't specify setbacks, number of parking spots, or what type of plans need to be planted. All of that is handled expertly and professionally by our staff and they do a great job. I would suggest here that, like those other things, we let the staff do their job. There is simply no need for this proposed change, as Mr. Burdon and Mr. Martin said. No projects are going to be approved without meeting the Virginia Beach's stringent stormwater requirements, so nothing's going to change. This change will simply just make it more difficult to do business in Virginia Beach. And I think we all know that that's something that we're all trying to work on to continue to get people to reinvest and come to Virginia Beach. As Mr. Martin said, there will always be some impact, no matter what the project is in redevelopment or development, it's going to always have some impact. To, to say no impact is just not, not practical. So, I would simply just ask that you guys vote against this proposal.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hang on, once again, are there any questions for Mr. Wood? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No more speakers.
All right, Mr. Tahan? Anything, there's no rebuttal or?
No, I don't think that's appropriate in this discussion.
Okay.
I believe that deliberation with the planning commission is the appropriate next step.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so with that, I'll close for comment, open it for discussion among the planning commissioners. Would anybody like to start?
I guess I will. I think y'all know where I'm going with this. I'm not going to support this for a number of different reasons. The, I don't know, there's second, if this goes into the comprehensive plan, there's not going to be any change in what's happening now. Staff does their job, they're going to do their job, they do great at it. Luckily, I was part of the stakeholders and I got to listen to quite a few people talk on this. And again, we didn't really get into the comprehensive plan, but listening to the procedural of the stormwater and how they're going about it, it was very interesting. And, and they had everything great to say about staff. They thought staff's doing a good job and they are doing a good job, but they have a hard job. And our, our city has more requirements than probably any other city around and we're very stringent on that. I just don't believe the technical document needs to be in a planning document. That's, there's no reason for that. I, I gotta say, I did probably 10, I talked to 10 different groups on the referendum, explained to them why we really need to pass this referendum. And at one time did I talk about putting this in the comprehensive plan because I tell you truth, I didn't know about it. I didn't know this was going to go into the comprehensive plan. And I have a funny feeling that 73% of the citizens of Virginia Beach who voted for this, probably 5% knew it was going in the comprehensive plan. So, I have no problem not, I'm not going to support this.
Anyone else? Well, Mr. Frankfield.
Oh, what the heck. I, I pretty much agree with Mr. Weiner. I think it's a detailed regulatory requirement masquerading in a policy document. I think it's redundant, it's unnecessary, and it sends the wrong message to people trying to do development in Virginia Beach. And the reality is, staff will not approve the project if it doesn't meet the requirements, period. And the perception is that, not, there is a thought that I hear from people that, oh, well, you know, the right people, the right people will get it approved, blah, blah, blah. The reality is, if you don't meet the requirements, you don't get approved, your only choice may be to reduce the size of your project. So, that's the, that's your choice. And so, I guarantee the planning director has never approved more units than were approved by city council. So, anyway, so I do not support this amendment also.
Okay, Ms. Bradley.
Well, I think I'm going to go in a different direction. The concern I have is when council adopted the ordinance and it was unanimously adopted in September, this is a language that was used. City council urges the residents to carefully consider the issue of flood mitigation and plan to vote in November. To assist the residents' deliberations, the city council makes the following commitments with, with the exception of number four, which is another issue, will be delivered within three weeks, and I know that didn't happen upon approval. I feel like this is a public trust issue in, in the way the referendum was set up. The council is the elected officials of our city. They felt like that this was an important commitment to make ahead of the referendum. So, and I know when it hit us in November, it was new, I, I didn't understand it at the time and I think we needed more information. Council sent it back to us to get public input. We've had six speakers, I think, counting the two last week, or last month. So, I'm going to support the resolution that's in front of us.
Anyone else? Thank you.
I guess I'll go. Um, I don't know, when the comp plan came around a few years ago, we, most of us here were involved in it. And, and the comprehensive, and the comprehensive plan is a guideline. It's a policy document book that just sort of outlines what, how we would like to see the city grow in different areas. And it doesn't address specifics and/or requirements for development or redevelopment. That's left to our qualified departments and our city staff in order for them to make those judgments. I don't, this doesn't have any place in our comprehensive plan whatsoever, nor do we address anything like this in our comprehensive plan. And to put it in there is a wrong move and I'm not going to support it. I just, I'm just not quite sure why it's even in front of us to do this. I think that, as Mr. Burdon and Mr. Martin and Mr. Wood all addressed, that the majority of the rest of our city is redevelopment, we don't really have any greenland left. And each of those pieces of property on their own basis should be addressed for stormwater. But that's a whole nother conversation. This is for the comprehensive plan and this, just at this point, does not belong in this particular document.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment as well that given that we are going through the process of a comprehensive review, that, you know, we do have this responsibility that it would be to our advantage to hear from more stakeholders and to see where we want to be with Vision 2040 rather than comprehensive plan 2016. And by no means, I now will concur with my colleagues, we want to create a more arduous or an over regulatory process that's going to inhibit the growth of our city.
Okay, thank you. Oh, okay, all right.
I'm not doing much talking today, a little hoarse, but I've been involved in the revision of several comp plans over the, my tenure on planning commission. I don't think we've ever put them in with specifics like in this, in, in the comp plan. As Dee said, this comp plan is more of a guideline for us to go by. And then we, we reference ordinances that we have in, in the comp plan that, that we do for development to go by. And, and that's what I think is, I just don't think it's the place for, to put this, this type of, of a resolution together and put it in the comp plan. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Can I ask the city attorney something? May I?
Sure.
So, so the ordinance says that commits that the city council will put an amendment in the city's comprehensive plan, recommending denial, but it, it does not have the same language, no impact, that is in the actual amendment. So, it seems like the amendment is perhaps a little more strict than what was promised by the city council. Is that, what did you say? Yes.
No, it is not the same language, no.
Right.
Because some of the language that, that was, was there was not language that should have been put in the comp plan.
Well, I agree with that.
And so, we have interpreted the language. And Mr. Tahan may wish to speak to that.
Yes, so having spoken with the council liaisons at the Friday work group meetings, the language here that Mr. Frankfield's discussing is where it talks about any project or development that generates a net increase in water discharge demand in any watershed or in any drainage system in watershed over the capacity of net margin to meet the modeled discharge baseline of the drainage system at buildout. So, we've had to, it was a little confusing, so we tried to distill it down into the language that we had. We did show it to the two council liaisons that were part of that group and they agreed that the language from that meant what we wrote in this proposal.
Okay, thank you. You know, my thoughts are that I think the motives are correct. And I think that, you know, it certainly brings attention to stormwater management and flood risk management. You know, it was pushed down, you know, back to us, we made a decision previously. And it's been pushed back to us, you know, to evaluate and receive public input. And I think the input that we received was generally negative concerning any of today and then at the workshop or the public hearing that we had previously. So, you know, it's, I think there are risks to, to areas that we would like to redevelop, you know, risk that it, that they're not redeveloped. And so, for those reasons, I'm, I'm not going to support it either. So, Madam Clerk?
Oh, no, do we have, do we have a motion?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to deny, deny the application.
All right, we have a, a motion by Mr. Weiner. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second by Mr., I heard Mr. Horsley.
Oh, Mr. Horsley, okay.
Now, Madam Clerk?
Okay, the motion is for denial, vote is open.
Okay, one thing, are there any abstentions? Sorry.
No.
Okay.
So, this, oh, sorry. I have a question. If it's for denial and I vote I.
Yes.
That is.
For denial.
For denial. You're supporting denial.
Okay, got you, sorry.
Yep, what happened to him?
I don't know. A recorded vote of seven in favor and two against, the motion for denial. Agenda item number one has been recommended for denial. Mr. Chair, is it okay to call the next?
Yes, please, call the next.
Our next item is agenda item number 10, Atlantic Development Associates LLC and WPL Ventures LLC, an application for subdivision variance, section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations on property located at 11173rd Street, located in District 6, formerly the Lynn Haven District.
Thank you, Ms. Andalup. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing the applicant, Mr. Brian Large, principal of the applicant, is with us. So, I want to start out with very, very basics to try to clear up any ambiguity or confusion that may have been engendered by the briefing this morning. The subject properties, there are two legal lots that exist today. One is Lot 12. It's a 50-foot by 150-foot, 7,500-square-foot lot that was established many, many decades by Platt before Princess Anne County adopted its first subdivision ordinance and its first zoning ordinance in 1952, 1953. This property is now zoned R5R. There was no such thing when this lot was created and not for, until the 70s was there an R5 zoning district. And it is legally non-conforming as to the size for a duplex lot under our current zoning, as is the case with 99% of the duplex development that exists at the north, in North Virginia Beach. They're almost entirely on non-conforming lots because they're not 80 feet wide and they're not 10,000 square feet. Today, this lot can have built on it by right a duplex. And in fact, my client has a duplex plan already, you know, was going to be submitted, I'll get into that. Or it can be developed under the north end overlay as two detached units on the same lot. So, I'm going to repeat, it is a legally non-conforming duplex lot. It does have, has no architectural mandates or requirements, has to meet setbacks, got to meet the lot coverage, the impervious surface and the 35-foot height. If you did two detached units on the 50-foot by 150-foot lot, it would have to meet the architectural, under the overlay that was adopted a number of years ago because the feeling is, and it's been successful, that we're better off with two small or two and a half story cottages than, or two-story cottages than having a big three-story bulk of a duplex. So, either of those can happen on that lot. The second lot, again, legally existing, buildable lot on the west side of Lot 12, sharing a boundary line with Lot 12, and it is 30 by 150 feet containing 4,500 square feet. Just like Lot 12, it is legally non-conforming and it can be developed as a duplex or by two detached single-family homes under the north end overlay. Both lots can be developed with a single-family home. Both can be developed with a single-family home. The 30-foot lot was created in 1949 by deed legally because there was no subdivision ordinance, and that's the story, that's the only story. There was never any vacating of a property line or any of that stuff that was talked about this morning. That's just complete, it's meaningless talk, it doesn't have any relevance. There are many, many such legally non-conforming lots that exist throughout our city that were created because, think of all the subdivisions that existed before we had zoning or subdivision ordinance. Thalia, Old Beach, Shadow Lawn, Lakewood, off of Rosemont Road area, Chesapeake Beach, are some of the areas, and at the north end, there are also non-conforming lots, not quite as many, but there are those up there. My client, Mrs. Atherhold, owned this property for many, many years. My client entered a contract to purchase the properties from her and because he develops at the north end a lot, he said, let's go in and, first of all, eliminate the non-conforming aspect of both of these lots by agreeing, by resubdividing and agreeing that no duplex, because once you resubdivide, you can't put a duplex on either one, nor can you do two separate units on either one of the two existing lots. Let's resubdivide and change the non-conforming 30-foot lot, which is non-conforming in lot size and in lot width, to make it more conforming at 40 feet wide in lot width and totally conforming at 6,000 square feet for a single-family home. And in order to do that, we are making Lot 12, which is conforming for a single-family home today, and with this will be conforming in every way to a single-family home except the lot width at 40 feet versus 50 feet. At the same time, proffer propose a single-family plan that meets all zoning requirements, no variances for anything, and with the exception of not being able to have a side-loading garage meets the overlay architectural requirements. And that's what is before you today. The, and we're not in the overlay. Now, I can get into a lot of answers, some other things, but that's the basis of this. And to make it clear, I gave you all a copy of a variance application that was filed in December to build a single-family house on the 30-foot lot with a decreased setback to five feet on the interior shared boundary with Lot 12, same boundary that's been there since Lot 12 was created back in the early 1900s. And before we went to the border zoning appeals, we were approached by the residents on 73rd Street, some of whom are here today. Judge Whitlow, I think, has signed up to speak and asked, we do the single-family plan. That's what we want, that's what we like, and that's why we're here. That DZA variance application for the 30-foot lot, that can, I've been doing this for 37 years with the hardship, the variance will. the variance will be granted if we have to go that direction. That's not the direction we want to go. This is the way we think it's best, because we know the people on the street prefer it. Single-family home, perfect, I mean, that's what people want. They don't want to be living behind somebody else's house, you know. Some people do, but it's a more valuable and it's a better way to develop the property, consistent with the character of the street. Be happy to answer any questions, and the conditions as recommended and the staff report are acceptable to the applicant.
Thank you, are there any questions for Mr.?
Mr. Bradon, the exhibit you've given us, that's for single-family, but by right, you could, your client could do a duplex, right, if he wanted to fit it?
Well, he can do, he absolutely can do a duplex on the 50-foot lot. And that's exactly what the alternative is, is two units on Lot 12 and that unit on the 30-foot lot. Yes, technically, you could do two units on the 30-foot lot. You'd need a greater amount of variance, and you'd have a problem with lot coverage to get four parking spaces on the property. So as a practical matter, legally, yes, practically, the 30-foot lot would be one skinny three-story house. It doesn't meet the guidelines of the overlay, doesn't have to. But I don't, I'm not going to sit up here and tell you that I think anyone would develop, you know, a duplex on that lot.
No, I just want to know the potential.
Potentially, yes, but undoubtedly, not even close question. You can put a duplex on Lot 12, which is exactly what, we were going in that direction at one point, and a single-family, just like is in that application, on the 30-foot lot.
Anyone else? Very, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Madam Clerk?
We have three speakers, Mr. Chairman, Chris Arias, followed by Morton Whitlow.
Mr. Arias, you've got, you've got three minutes when the red light.
Yeah, thank you.
Please state your name.
Uh, yes, my name is Chris Arias, and I'm representing the, excuse me, the Arias family that owns 112 on 73rd Street, directly across the street from the property that's applying for the variance. And I'd like to say we are very much in favor of the application and the proposed design for two single-family homes on the lots. We don't want to see a duplex or the alternative go in. And looking at the lots and the way they're designed, one's very skinny development, there's one very skinny structure going in next to another one, does not fit with the context of the neighborhood. Also looking at congestion and burdens on the infrastructure for our little street, and also just trying to keep the, the character of the neighborhood. So yes, I read through the staff's report, and we were in agreement with that. So, yeah, we hope you, I hope you guys approve it.
Okay.
That's it, any questions?
Any questions?
Sorry, that's your job. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Morton Whitlow, followed by Jerry West.
Good afternoon, thank you. My name is Morton Whitlow, I live at 107 73rd Street. Before I start, I want to thank all of you for your service on the Planning Commission. It's a very, very important civic function, and I appreciate your work in that regard. We're, I'm in support of the applicant. Our block simply wants two single-family homes, it's a predominantly single-family block. Interestingly, over the last 25 years that I've owned my little cottage, almost everybody on the block's had a chance to tear down and start over or remodel, and one by one, two houses were torn down and single-family houses were rebuilt. Nine of us have chosen to rehab or remodel our existing old cottages. And so it's stayed a single-family block uniquely, one by one, pretty special in the North End. So we'd like to keep it that way. I'm not aware of any opposition to this by the people on our block. I think you're probably all aware of the emails that have come in from almost every property owner, all in support of these two single-family homes on the 40-foot lots. So we hope you'll agree with us. The one thing, I note there was a, a letter was sent in by a representative of the North End Civic League opposing this application. And first, all of us really appreciate the work of the North End Civic League folks in protecting our community, they do a lot of great volunteer work, and we appreciate their efforts. We just respectfully disagree with their position in this case. We think they ought to be decided on a case-by-case basis. I noted in the letter, there's a couple of things, I guess the retired lawyer and retired judge comes out in me when I look at this, so I had to rebut a couple of things that are in that, the opposition letter. There was some complaint that the houses would be too narrow at 24 feet in width, out of character with the neighborhood. Well, the house right next door at 109, Mr. McArdle's house, his house is exactly 24 feet wide, same. My little cottage is the smallest house on the block at 107, it's 24 feet wide. So 24 feet is in character, not out of character. Lastly, there was a mention that perhaps the residents of the 100 block had been misled by the developer. That is simply not accurate, I have not been misled. Thank you very much for your attention to this important issue to us, and thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, are there any questions for Mr. Whitlow?
I, I have one. Judge, there's a conversation about the design of the house. Just curious as to what your thoughts are, as far as, does it fit in with the street?
Well, it does, we've got, as I mentioned, two single-family homes in the last decade have been, they tore down, single-family homes, rebuilt, single-family homes, and both of those have front-loading garages. It's almost a necessity with these 50-foot lots. I mean, you can't, you know, if you've got a little, having something other than that's very difficult. It's possible, but difficult. You know, everybody would love to see a little cute cottage, but, you know, the truth is, square footage matters. And so these houses won't be much, they'll be a lot bigger than my house, but they won't be much bigger than all the other houses on the street, so. And they look to be two-and-a-half stories. I think they'll have some housing on the third level, but the way they appear to be designed, they look like two-and-a-half-story houses, which is compatible with our block, we believe. But all the neighbors up and down the street, as you got the emails, we're supportive of what's proposed.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Thanks.
Good afternoon, I'm Jerry West, I'm here on behalf of the North Virginia Beach Civic League.
Okay, Ms. West, I think you have, I think you have 10, 10 minutes, correct? Okay.
Oh, I probably won't need 10 minutes, but thank you. I'm here on behalf of the North End Civic League. We are in opposition to this resubdivision because I, we think it sets a dangerous precedent on the North End. One of the things, as an architect and a member of the Zoning Review Committee for almost 20 years now, that I always ask the group at the beginning when we're reviewing a variance request is, what would the North End be like if everyone was given permission to do this? In this case, I think this is one of the more dangerous places to go. Our zoning codes clearly say that the minimum lot width needs to be 50 feet. That allows for plenty of parking, or better parking, I'll say, everybody knows the North End has a parking issue. It allows for green space for stormwater management, and that's the way the neighborhood has traditionally been laid out. A lot of the areas were laid out in 25-foot lots before the zoning code, and people would buy two, three, four of them, so you see these 80-foot wide lots or 100-foot wide lots or 75-foot wide lots, because they bought the 25-foot ones. And also, some have been subdivided off into, like, the 30-foot lot. They were always subdivided and bought for single-family homes until duplexes became a thing. And then, when duplexes came in, the two cottage overlay was made an alternative to the traditional three-story duplexes on 50-foot wide lots. So I would like to respectfully disagree with Eddie that, and I won't use the word "legal" because I know that's not the right word for this, but that subdividing these lots into two 40-foot wide lots is making them more conforming because we're taking one lot that is already conforming and making it into a non-conforming lot. We are improving the 30-foot wide lot, but we're not making it conforming. So the thought of making them more conforming is like being a little bit pregnant or not, in my opinion. And in the opinion of, of the Civic League Zoning Review Committee that I'm, that I am representing today, one of the things, I met with Judge Whitlow and let him know that the applicant can build exactly the same houses that he has in his hands and, under the two cottage option, without subdividing the lots. There isn't really any difference at all, except that the garage needs to be set back six feet from the main part of the house, the main front of the house. It doesn't have to be side-loading, it just has to be six feet back from the front face of the house, so recessed a little bit. Otherwise, everything is pretty much the same, they would be held to the two-and-a-half stories, but it looks like the design that they have right now is two-and-a-half stories. I haven't looked at it for compliance with some of the more esoteric parts of the design that are in that code, but I feel confident that very nice-looking houses could be built under the two cottage code and not subdivide the lot. The reason that the lot is here to be subdivided is that the developers can make more money on two single-family homes unencumbered by a condo document. If he builds the two cottages on one 80-foot wide lot, which is what makes the most sense, if you take the 30-foot and the 50-foot and vacate the property line, then you get an 80-foot wide lot, and the two houses can be side by side rather than front and back. They do not have to be front and back, that's what the diagram in the code shows, but they do not have to be front and back. They can be side by side if you have a wide enough lot, and they do, if you made it an 80-foot wide lot. So there would be no difference in the houses if you vacate the property line than there would if you cut it into two 40-foot wide lots, except for there would be no condo document, and therefore, greater profits could be reaped by the builder and the applicant. We think it sets a really bad precedent. We have stormwater issues and we have parking issues. And then we have what Judge Whitlow calls the traditional nests of the neighborhood, the small houses, and the ones that were developed as beach cottage-type things. These two houses that can be built, that he's shown, meet all of those requirements, except that they would be condoed. If you thought ahead and said, if this sets a precedent, and I believe it will because there has already been one case of a developer taking three lot, three, three homes on five or six 25-foot lots, I can't remember exactly what it was then, and cutting them all up into 40-foot wide lots. So five houses now where there used to be three. We thought that was a bad precedent setter, and now we're seeing it come to fruition with this case. There, there really isn't any reason not to vacate the property line and make an 80-foot wide lot. Any questions?
Okay.
Yep.
Ms. Klein?
So it sounds like, and Bobby, please correct me, that they could also take the two lots that exist now and build a single-family home and a duplex.
They could, and that's the fear of the neighbors. And by all means, I agree with the neighbors, the preference of finishing off the development on their street with more single-family cottage-like homes is definitely preferable. But they have been told that it is possible to build a three-story duplex on the 50-foot wide one and a skinny 14-foot wide, whatever, it could be a duplex, it could be two cottages, like Eddie said, or it could be one single-family home, but 14-foot wide without any, any variances. I'm saying that the value in these two pieces of property is when you combine them, and you can have a very nice one single-family home, a larger one, that's gorgeous. Or you can have two smaller ones that are side by side that would also be gorgeous. I think either of those would suit the neighbors. But it is the threat of having that duplex, or not the threat, but the ability to do the duplex if the applicant should so choose to do so, that has scared the neighbors into wanting to have it subdivided into two 40-foot wide lots.
So if it's not, it's not within our power, right, to say that it has to be one lot? Because it's technically two lots, right Bobby? Okay, so is it the opinion of the Civic League that if it is technically two lots and the one lot is not an option, that it be two 40-foot lots or one 50-foot lot and one 30-foot lot?
The Civic League does not want to see it divided up into two 40-foot wide lots because that is substandard and it causes issues. If everybody was to do that, and more and more it would happen if this is passed, you'll have 40-foot wide lots instead of 50-foot wide lots, thereby creating more homes, more infrastructure needed, water, sewer. Stormwater management issues will get way worse, the more homes there are, you have to have two onsite parking spaces paved for every home. So you're paving more and more, less trees, less grass, stormwater management problems everywhere, parking problems everywhere. So it's the long-term precedent that we're concerned with.
So if the 80-foot lot is not an option, and you don't want to set the precedent of the two 40-foot lots, does that mean that your next best selection is the conforming 50-foot lot and the non-conforming 30-foot lot?
Well, the, combining it into 80, I'm sorry if I don't understand your question, but combining it into 80 would be perfectly fine. And having two or one homes on that, yeah.
The, right now, there's, there's two lots.
Correct.
Right, so by right, the developer could have the 50-foot lot and the 30-foot lot.
Correct.
So if the 80, one 80-foot lot is not an option, and it's either two 40s or a 50 and a 30, does the Civic League prefer the 50 and the 30 because at least the 50 is conforming?
Yes, that is correct, because it wouldn't be setting a precedent for the 40-foot wide lots.
So Jerry, I might have missed something in all of this, because I'm, irregardless of whether we've got two 40s, a 30, and a 50, or an 80. We're still putting two, two single-family houses on this whole piece of property.
Correct.
Regardless of how it's.
Correct.
The pie is sliced.
Yes.
When you mentioned, and I'm, maybe I misunderstood you, as far as stormwater and infrastructure and stuff, it's still two houses, it's still the same amount of.
You're absolutely correct.
Use on the same space of property, so I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out, that's really not sort of, that's not the issue, the amount of use on the piece of property.
Correct.
Because two houses is two houses.
Yes, you're absolutely correct in that respect. It is the danger of having every lot, every 80-foot wide lot.
Dividing.
Divided into two 40-foot wide lots, which would traditionally not be the case. So if the majority of the lots started becoming that, then we would have more houses ultimately than we would if people were unable to create the substandard lots.
Okay. Okay, it wasn't the amount of use on that.
Correct, not on, not on that specific lot. And that's why I say, you know, we're, we're, we'd be happy if it became an 80-foot lot and had two houses on it. We're not against that, of course.
It's the subdividing.
It's the subdividing, that's the only issue, is the subdividing of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Weiner?
Um, Mrs. West, I got a, well, so we were out there last week, and we were standing in front of it and I asked staff to go, please look into how many times this has happened in the past. No, well, I don't say it, so I've been doing this for a while, and I don't remember three houses becoming five. I don't know where that was.
It's between 74th and 75th Street on the Feeder Road.
I don't, I don't, I don't remember that.
Yeah, I did.
See?
Well, I remember there's a lot of.
So, so staff came back to us with, since 1993, twice, this has only happened twice. I personally don't think this is going to set a precedent for the future. That's my opinion, I mean, you know. I mean, you know, everybody has their opinion, but so I just don't see this happening as much as you think it's going to happen.
I would really hope that was the case. I really would. But we saw it once and now we're seeing it the second time. And what we're seeing is this cyclical pressure to have the homes torn down and rebuilt by developers as opposed to the traditional, a person buys a lot or a person buys a lot with this small house on it that's a teardown, or they want a bigger house than what's on the lot. And so they're developing that lot for themselves as opposed to someone coming in and saying, how can I make the most money by buying this property that's available?
Okay.
That's the issue. Yeah.
Anyone else?
I guess I have.
Okay. Frank Field.
So I'm just concerned about the form of the houses and the relationships. So if you condo the lot, the discussion has been you can get the same thing, what's the big deal? But the way I see it, you can't get the same thing because if you have to have the garage set back six feet, well then, and since there's no house to come out in front of the garage, that you basically have to set the entire house back six feet.
No. No, it's just that the portion of the house that has the garage door, let's say this is the main body of the house.
Right.
The garage is here.
Right.
It just has to be set back six feet from the face of that. So the face of that one is at the, wherever you place it.
So it could be like a tunnel going back six feet with a garage?
Six feet isn't that far. It's like from.
Well, I wonder. Okay. I just.
From there to there.
I'm having a hard time visualizing how it would work. I'm not trying to argue with you.
Well, there's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of examples, you know, on the North End that have been built that way. So I know it's too late to go see them now, but.
So Jerry, while we have you up, because I know you, so you're asked to follow the guidelines for the North End overlay, for the setback.
I'm asking, I'm asking this commission not to approve.
No.
Creating substandard lots. That's what I'm asking.
Right. No, no. Okay. You're right. All right.
I don't.
No, I'll just move on.
I don't have any say-so on what a person decides to build.
You're right.
So I don't want to presume that that's what, you hear me saying, that's not what I'm saying.
No, no, no. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. No. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Verdon.
First of all, I want to thank my good friend Jerry West for being the one speaking today so I didn't have to address some of the comments in Mr. Warren's letter. And Jerry was very careful in the way she worded her comments because, you know, this is not a situation in any way, shape, manner, or form where anybody's trying to browbeat or twist arms or anything else. In fact, Judge Whitlow called me. I didn't call him. The idea that this sets a dangerous precedent, a lot of times if you listen closely to what Jerry said, she keeps referring to this as an 80-foot lot. It is not an 80-foot lot. And there is, there are some 80-foot lots at the North End, and an 80-foot lot at the North End would never get approved to be divided into two 40-foot lots, ever. And I would, as Mr. Weiner has asked staff, staff can take a look at the subdivision plats of all the blocks at the North End, and with the exception of the two or two and a half blocks that Jerry lives on that were developed by Shore Realty, which have non-conforming lots, the rest of the North End doesn't have non-conforming lots. So the idea that this is setting some dangerous precedent is just truly not accurate, just like it wasn't accurate to suggest that we were using a straw man or a boogeyman or whatever trying to convince people of anything. It's not the city's, never has been the city's policy to encourage two-unit condominiums at any point in time. So let's deal with what's true, and that is that there are two buildable lots. And this is not a subdivision, this is a resubdivision. And the 50 by 150-foot lot is a non-conforming lot. And we are making it conforming as to density, and the comp plan talks about density. Jerry's talking about density. That's exactly what we're doing. And it's, and to, I don't want to get down in the weeds, but it's easy for me to do. If you tried to do the overlay side by side, and Jerry is absolutely correct that you can do it side by side, this morning I think it was suggested you couldn't. But the reality is if we did that, the house, and to meet the, you can't do a six-foot setback. Construction-wise, it's very, very difficult for the garage to be set back. To do something under the overlay, what you would do is you'd build a shared driveway to serve both units, and you have 10-foot setbacks on the outside, and your shared driveway has got to be 18 feet wide because it's a shared driveway. And you wind up, instead of having a 24-foot wide house, you wind up with a 20 or 21-foot wide house. So it's not exactly the same, and it can't be exactly the same. So this notion that you're going to dictate how the property develops as a condo as opposed to two lots, it's not the way this should be handled in any way, shape, or form. If I believe for one second, or my client believed for one second, that you could take lots at the North End and just carve them up into 40-foot lots, that's not possible. It isn't possible. It may be possible, but the folks in the Shore Realty subdivision, who, part of it, I'm representing all the street closures, you know, they don't want to do that to their properties, and I don't think there are any in there that could even do that at this point. But this does not apply to 90, well, maybe not 90, maybe 70, 80, 90, 80% of the North End. What Jerry's saying is a bad precedent doesn't exist. And this situation, if it exists anywhere else, I don't know of it, and it wouldn't be if it did more than one or two situations. It's not a circumstance that I think will ever be recurring. And all we're trying to do is the best job, and it is truly more valuable for everybody concerned to do them as separate single-family homes, and it's easier for the city from a regulatory standpoint. Condos create a lot of additional issues. I'm not going to ask Ms. Wilson to testify about that, but I think she'll nod her head. So why would we want to do a condo as opposed to doing two single families when we already have two lots that we can build a duplex and a single-family on? Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Verdon?
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, I'll close up for comment and open it up among the planning commissioners. Anybody like to start?
No, I will.
Dr. Akres.
I mean, as I stated in the informal, I mean, you've got a situation where you have a house with a property line going down the middle. And something that Mr. Verdon just said that just struck me, you've got the definition of a subdivision, the definition of a resubdivision. A subdivision is dividing one lot into two or more. A resubdivision is changing the lot line. And in this case, they're changing it to betterment of what's there. And so having said that, I'm going to support it.
Okay. Anyone else?
Jerry.
Jerry? Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
I support it also, only because I can't figure out a way it would be better to condo the lot. The product that is there with entrance, each having their own entrance, their own separate driveway, is a better solution than a setback garage or one house behind the other. So it seems like a better, of all the choices, seems to me like the best solution.
Okay. Thank you.
Say something real quick. I, in a long time, I've been doing this, never seen this before. And don't get me wrong, the North End Civic League does a great job with the design, what they do up there, but for everybody on the street to come in favor of this, I've never seen that before. And that means something, so I'm definitely going to support it.
Okay. Thanks. Yep. I mean, I generally, I mean, I kind of like the way it is. I like the little cottage, you know, and the green space, but, you know, barring that, I also, you know, highly respect the Civic League's opinion. You know, I think that they, you know, have very good input, and, you know, their restricted adherence to holding to the layouts and dimensional requirements and standards is, I think that's fantastic. However, you know, I think there's great value in the way that it's laid out, in a single-family, you know, the support from the neighborhood, and I think it'll provide value, you know, to the neighborhood itself. So I'm going to support it as well. Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Very appropriate.
Okay. Ms. Akres makes a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Frank Field, you have a second. Are there any abstentions? Okay.
Vote is open.
Can you hear me?
My recorded vote of nine in favor, zero against. Agenda item number 10 has been recommended for approval.
Thank you all. I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is agenda item number 11, Sacred Daggers LLC, an application for alternative compliance at 1705 Mediterranean Avenue, located in District 6, formerly the Beach District. Would the applicant or the applicant's representative please step to the podium?
Please state your name for the record.
Jackie Romano Smith.
Okay.
I guess I understood that it was okay, but somebody, some people had some questions.
Speak up a little bit.
I understand some people had some questions, so I guess that's, I'm here to answer them.
Okay. Just, could you describe a little bit about your proposal?
We are a custom tattoo shop. We want to move into the Vibe District so that we can be a part of that community with art. We are not a street shop or walk-in shop. People are booked out for months, so you can't just walk in. We are going to be part the studio and part an art gallery, so.
Okay. And where's your, are you currently located, someplace?
Yes, we're on Windsor Oaks and Holland Road.
Okay. So you're already operating in the city?
Correct. We're not going to have two shops, so we're going to move from that space.
Okay. Okay.
Other speakers?
Okay.
Oh, okay. There's speakers.
Okay. Are there any? Yes. Sorry. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have two speakers. They were both in person. They both left. I think we have one online now, so I'm going to call virtually. Danielle Good. Ms. Good, please pause two to three seconds while we unmute your audio feed and then state your name and go right into your comments.
Can you hear me? You can hear me? Hello? Yes, my name is Danielle Good, and I am a permanent makeup salon owner and school. And I want to, it's a wonderful thing that the lady is going to be able to have a tattoo shop through alternative compliance. Congratulations, Jackie. I'm here because I would like you guys to also consider while changing the planning department's ordinances, the permanent makeup industry has been very hurt in not being able to do their profession. They're very restricted. We find them working in their homes or without a conditional use permit. They don't have a health department permit, and it's a danger to the community. We're very restricted on what we could do. We belong in the hair, the nails, the med spas, the medical clinics, and that's where we have been and always will be. And I would like the planning department to consider possibly even separating permanent makeup and tattoo. The Department of Occupational and Professional Regulation separates it. We have two different licenses, one for tattoo and one for permanent makeup. They're very, very different in their curriculum and their hours of education, although I do understand that the state does state the definition of tattoo, like the city attorney said. With that understanding, we're very different. That really is all I have to say. I'm just concerned about, you know, my permanent makeup community because they're not able to work in their profession because of the restrictions upon tattoo parlors. It would be a wonderful thing if they could move on and have it as an accessory use or do an alternative compliance or have some sort of variance to be able to do these services where they belong in the beauty industry, not necessarily in a tattoo parlor, in a zone tattoo parlor area. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
We appreciate your comments. This is specifically for Sacred Daggers, you know, operation of a tattoo parlor in the Vibe District, though. So it's a very specific application. I don't think we'd have any questions in regards to her comments, but, so can we go ahead to the next speaker?
Our next speaker was Cynthia Schott. She left.
It's good.
It's good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
No more speakers?
Okay. Since we have no more speakers, I'm going to close it for comment and open it among the planning commissioners.
I make a motion to, to accept this application.
I second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Ms. Oliver and a second by Ms. Klein. Do we have anyone abstaining? Okay.
Okay. Vote is open. My recorded vote of nine in favor, zero against. Agenda item number 11 has been recommended for approval.
Yes.
Okay. Our last agenda item, our agenda items 13 and 14, Christopher and Kathleen Sprower, applications for conditional use permits, short-term rentals at 2200 and 2202 Mediterranean Avenue, located in District 6, formerly the Beach District. Would the applicant or the applicant's representative please step to the podium?
Good afternoon. Please state your name for the record.
This is Christopher Sprower, my wife Kathleen Sprower. You want to hear a little bit about the project?
Describe a little bit about your application.
Yeah, so we purchased 2200 and 2202 Mediterranean back in December. We've been.
Sir, you can move the mic up so you don't lean down.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. A little tall. Yep. Purchased it in December, and since then, we've been renovating the property with the intent to use it as a short-term rental. We currently home-share a property in Croatan that we use as a short-term rental, and we have one down in Sandbridge as well. So we have experience as operators. So we pursued this project with the intent to file a CUP and use it as such. So that's kind of the project in a nutshell.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant?
I do.
Okay. Ms. Akres.
So you'll be the onsite manager?
That's correct, yes.
And you live close by?
We do, about. We live in Croatan, so.
Seven minutes.
Seven minutes away.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker, Chris Wood.
Hello again.
Hello.
My name is Chris Wood for the record. I own the property next door to the applicant. I'm here to voice my support. We met last week, and they're wonderful people. They appear to be very good managers. I had a little concern because the driveway that they were using for parking was on our property, about three feet of it, and there's a bunch of encroachments on our property, a patio, a fence, some other stuff. So we have agreed that they will remove the encroachments and put up a fence between our properties. And I have also given them permission to use three feet of our driveway, but I understand that the staff wants them to expand their driveway so parking's on their property, which makes sense. But we have no problem with it as long as they remove the encroachments and put the fence up. And I don't know them, but they were very professional and seem like they are going to be good operators.
Okay. Ms. Akres.
Mr. Wood, is this your residence or a rental?
It's a rental.
Okay. And you said no problems at all so far?
Well, they just bought it and they haven't rented it yet, but they seem to be really nice people and good operators, and they're very, the people who sold it were supposed to remove all the encroachments before they sold it, but they didn't do that. And as I said, they're also welcome to use three feet of our driveway if staff will allow that. If not, that's fine, too.
I think that's great that neighbors are working together.
Absolutely. That's the way it should be.
For change. In the OR district, too.
It's not the North End.
Thanks.
Sorry. All right.
So I've got, so what you're saying is that they don't need that three feet there. They've got, they're having to expand.
I'll let them comment on that, but I think that they do need it, but they need it for the parking. I'm happy to let them use mine, but I think staff wanted them to get their own.
Any other questions for Mr. Wood? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. If you all could come back up for, for a minute?
Make a motion.
Uh, we do need the additional three-and-a-half feet of driveway. Uh, we can either use Mr. Woods, um, and then I think the planning commission recommended or suggested that we, uh, just pave, uh, three feet of driveway, which could either do concrete, or if they're okay with it, I can just expand it with gravel to the east, slightly on the north side to fulfill the three feet required, so.
I have a feeling that, um, whatever is in your staff report that, that, um, that the city asked you to do is probably in your best interest to go ahead and do it that way, but Mr. Verdon probably can decide to that.
Staff understanding that there's, uh, some, I don't want to say gray area, but gray area to the parking issue. Uh, as noted, the zoning administrator has to approve it. Any expansion on the property does have to be purvious per the regulations, so, um, we'll work with the applicant to assure that they get that final three feet in a, in an appropriate manner.
Yeah, we'll certainly, uh, comply with whatever, uh, whatever needs to be done to take care of the driveway and the parking issue, so.
Okay. All right. I'm going to close. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, okay. I'm going to close for comment. Um, is there, and discussion now, open it up for discussion among the, the planning commissioners?
I'd like to make a motion to prove it.
Also, again.
Okay. Um.
Vote open.
Okay. So, we've got a motion by Mr. Akraz. Um, do you have a second?
Second by Robin.
Second by, uh, second by Robin. Uh, Ms. Klein? Um, is there anyone needing to abstain? Okay. All right. Madam Clerk?
Vote is open. Our recorded vote of nine in favor, zero against, agenda items 13 and 14 have been recommended for approval.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, is there anything else? Uh, Mr. Tahan, do you have any?
No. I would just note that, um, Tom Nicholas, our facilities engineer, is coming at about two o'clock to take anyone to a tour, I know some of you had a chance to go already, uh, but to tour the new city hall if you'd like to go.
Yeah, thank you for that opportunity. Yeah, it was a good tour that we had this morning. Um, okay.
You have a great, you had a good tour guide, that's why.
Yep. So, um, thank you for participating in today's, um, planning commission hearing. The meeting is adjourned.
Yeah.
Good job.
He just tore her medals.
Yeah.
Easy.
That was funny.
That was blessed. That was great. Zach.